For Tuesday, May 18th. And everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for what it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Yetsey. Mrs. McCarthy.
Here.
Mrs. Saxon.
Here.
Mrs. Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Vaca.
Here.
Finalization of the agenda, is there anything to add and or delete?
The agenda is final as presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on April 6, 2021, April 20, 2021, and April 26, 2021.
Second.
Loop by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tamira.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mrs. Yetsey. Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
All right, we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Well, I don't know about all of you, but I can't believe it is May and by far my most exciting, favorite time of year. But tonight is extra special. We have the, I have the honor and pleasure to recognize the 2021 retirees of the North Ridgeville City Schools. Combined, the small group of seven people has rendered 200 years of service to our district. That's absolutely outstanding and we are so proud of the commitment and dedication that these professionals have put into nurturing the children of our community. And tonight, we thank them for their service to the North Ridgeville City Schools. Additionally, we recognize them for the mentorship and leadership they have shared with their colleagues throughout the years. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the 2021 retirees of North Ridgeville City Schools, beginning with Mrs. Denise Brady. I think Denise is with us tonight. Denise Brady began her career as a highly requested substitute teacher for both North Ridgeville City Schools and Aleria City Schools. Denise was hired as a learning disabilities small group tutor for elementary students in 1987, and she served as an individual tutor for visually impaired middle school students. In August of 1989, Denise served as a sixth grade teacher and a tutor for students with disabilities. Denise became a fourth grade teacher during the 1990 and 1991 school year, then moved to the middle school to teach social studies. Denise will finish up her career in this role as a social studies teacher. Also throughout her career, Denise was the audio visual director at Field Suite, a middle school cheerleading coach, the middle school athletic faculty manager, and a home instruction tutor. Congratulations Denise, we're so thrilled for you. Next, we have Ms. Janet Hartman with 22 years of service to the district. Janet Hartman was hired as a part-time physical education teacher at the middle school in 1999. Janet moved to Liberty Elementary as a full-time PE teacher where she remains today. During her career, Janet served as a safety patrol advisor, a middle school girls basketball coach, the Liberty Chain of Command first person, Liberty Building Leadership Team, and additionally was on the Health K9 Course of Study Review Team and the Elementary Physical Education Course of Study Review Team. Congratulations Janet. Okay, and our final certified retiree is Julie McCauley, who served us for 36 years. Julie McCauley was hired as a third grade teacher at Liberty Elementary School in 2008. Prior to teaching for the North Ridgeville City Schools, Julie was an intervention specialist with Westlake City Schools, a principal with Avon Local Schools, a middle school math teacher with Cleveland Municipal School District, and a development director, teacher, and drama director with Open Door Christian Schools. During her career with NRCS, Julie taught summer school and was also a mentor teacher for our new staff members. Thank you so much Julie, and congratulations. Additionally, we have four support staff members who are retiring, beginning with Laura Baystock, who has 30 years of service. Laura began working as a substitute cleaner for North Ridgeville in 1982. She became a substitute food service worker in 1995 and was hired as a server at Liberty in 1996. Laura moved to the middle school and became a cashier during the 2000-2001 school year, and then moved to the academic center and became a head cashier in 2017, where she remains until her retirement at the end of the school year. Congratulations Laura, and thank you for your service. Marie Justine Beaman for 23 years of service. Justine was hired as a support staff substitute beginning in the 1995-1996 school year. In 1998, Justine became a paraprofessional instructional aide at Liberty until she became the attendance secretary at Wilcox in 2007. Later that year, she accepted the athletics secretary position at the high school. When the academic center opened in 2017, Justine became the 5'8" office secretary until her retirement on March 1st, 2021. While she's not with us tonight, we congratulate Marie Justine Beaman. Also unable to attend but served us for 30 years is Vera Gale Rimmer. Vera Rimmer began as a substitute cafeteria worker in the 1989-1990 school year. Vera was hired as a food service worker server at Field Suite Elementary in 1991. Vera moved to the middle school as a server in May of 1992 until she transferred to the high school in 1994. In 1998, Vera became a cook at the high school until the 15-16 school year when she assumed the head cook position, where she remained until her retirement on November 1, 2020. Congratulations Vera. And our final retiree this evening is Cheryl Stoll. Cheryl began her career as a substitute bus driver in 1997 until she was hired as a full-time driver in January of 1998. Cheryl remained employed as a school bus driver until her retirement on October 1st, 2020. Congratulations Cheryl. President Vaca, Vice President Saxon, and members of the Board of Education, I present to you the North Ridgeville City Schools 2021 retirees. Congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations to all of you, and we appreciate all the years of service you've dedicated to the students of North Ridgeville City Schools. I know the last 18 months of your employment haven't necessarily been what you envisioned as you went into retirement, but we do appreciate everything you've done for us, everything you've done in the last 18 months. So enjoy retirement for everything it's worth, and come back and visit us, please.
Congratulations. Okay. Next, we have an update as we do every May to our five-year forecast, and I would turn it over to our district treasurer, CFO, Michael Fasini.
Thank you, Mrs. Casario, President Vaca, members of the board. So this is always a good time for me to talk about the financial position of the school district with the presentation of the five-year forecast. As you may recall, we met in November of 2020. We talked about the five-year forecast, that was our initial forecast for the current fiscal year 2021. And now this is the May update to that November forecast. We use the forecast as a tool, communication device, to not only engage the board, but also the community in long-range planning, and to provide the information necessary to make sound financial decisions. Serves as a basis for the approval of contracts, negotiated agreements, and it's also a method for oversight organizations like the Auditor of State's Office, the Ohio Department of Education, to identify school districts with potential financial issues. The forecast is very much a working document. We're looking at only general fund revenues and expenditures. And I do create the forecast in a conservative manner, using the most current information at the time. And that information does change a lot. There's been a lot of ups and downs, back and forth, in the past year and a half or so. I think the forecast is certainly reflective of that. Some of the highlights, these are items impacting the forecast. They include topics that we discussed during the November meeting, as well as new information and changes since that time. And I'm going to talk about each one of these a little bit. Real estate, real estate collections are the district's largest revenue source, came in slightly higher than expected. This is due to a combination of collection splits, the timing of when taxes were paid, as well as the collection of delinquent taxes from the prior fiscal year. Probably the biggest one, state funding. If you remember, towards the beginning of the pandemic, the district was cut $2 million in state funding. We were given back a portion of that, a little over $600,000. Out of that $2 million, we were given back in our state funding from the initial cuts that the state had made. Ohio Bureau of Workers Compensation dividend payments. So to help ease the impact of the pandemic, the governor ordered the release of workers' compensation reserves. This resulted in multiple dividend payments that the district received. It was a highly unanticipated event. Expenditures and the pandemic. So overall, the pandemic, although it created additional expenditures that we would not have typically seen in a regular school year, it also changed those expenses that we would typically have in a regular school year. For example, substitute costs were down significantly this current fiscal year compared to what we spent on substitutes in the prior fiscal year. There were several incentives and programs we were able to take advantage of and apply credits for salaries paid during the time that we were completely remote, eliminating premium payment on our workers' comp, something that we would see, a typical expense that we would have every year, just to name a few examples there. The CARES Act relief funding kind of goes hand-in-hand to student wellness and success funding. So the receipt of one-time relief funding under the CARES Act allowed us the ability to offset general fund expenditures and salaries, supplies, materials, and capital outlay line items in the forecast in the current fiscal year. Student Wellness and Success Funding, that's also been applied in a similar manner. In November, we talked about the concept of supplanting, and we were able to successfully apply that with student wellness and success funds as well in the current year of a five-year forecast. So collectively, these items have improved bottom-line numbers, most notably, like I said, in the current fiscal year of the forecast with the projected surplus. Now, the most important point I'd like to make is that all of those items were one-time items. This has bought us time, but it does not change that critical growing need for additional revenue as noted by the deficit spending throughout the forecast period. Now, revenues are in fact growing. They are growing at an average of $1.3 million throughout the forecast period. Just a little over 60% of the district's revenue is generated from local sources. In November, we talked about the importance of the tax base, assessed valuation, millage, and what a mill generates in North Ridgeville. And that is primarily what is driving the revenue increases throughout the forecast period, and that's where all that, the revenue growth comes from. And we still continue to be frozen in our state funding, regardless of any increasing enrollment numbers. And there's been several proposals on a new funding formula with the most current, the recent House Bill 110. Whether you look at the old formula or any newly proposed versions of a funding formula for school districts, our district is going to be perceived as incredibly wealthy compared to many districts across the state of Ohio. So I do not foresee revenue increasing on the state side anytime soon, and if it does, I don't anticipate it being a significant event for us. At the same time, we see our revenue growing at an average of $1.3 million per year, we also see growth on the expense side. Only expenses are growing at an average of almost $3 million per year through the forecast period. This isn't because any one thing is entirely wrong, it's a scenario that you would typically see in a district like ours where the trend has historically been 100 new students enrolled per year since 2015. Now by the last year on the forecast, we anticipate enrollment being over 5,000. The graph here, you can see this goes back all the way to 2016, and you can see the progression here. And then when you get to 20, you see where it stays flat from 20 to 21, when really it should be about here. And that's what I was talking about with that, with this, where we were able to, that one-time funding came in, where we were able to supplant those general fund expenses. And that's what I was referring to when I was saying it being one-time only, because you can see the next year in '22, it follows that same progression that we've seen going back to 2016. Now what's driving this? The expense side is primarily being driven by increases in staffing due to accommodate an increasing enrollment. And that is one of the main assumptions in the five-year forecast. And with an increasing enrollment, we also have increasing costs for instructional materials, technology, equipment, transportation, costs associated with students on individualized education plans, as well as inflationary costs. The cost to do business, operate, and be competitive all go up, so that we are able to continuously deliver that best, the best educational experience and to fulfill all the expectations of North Ridgeville. So expenses are growing faster than revenue. If you look at the graph here with the two lines, the blue line being revenue and the orange line being expenses, this again will take you back to 2016, and you can see the trend. You can see that steady growth in the blue line. And then you see how the orange line, the orange expenditure line is at a higher incline? So this tells us that revenues, although they are growing, they have consistently been outpaced by the growth in our expenses. And we're now at the point where those two lines are crossing. Now, the impact on the financial position on the district's cash balance is illustrated by this graph above here. You can see the climb, and here's the level off, and then the drop. And really, that is school finance in a nutshell. The numbers in blue there to the right, those are forecasted projections for this current fiscal year. So we started off, that's actual cash balance, we started the fiscal year off with projected revenues, projected expenses, and projected ending cash balance. So that is the projected cash balance we will have at the close of this current fiscal year in June. That seems like a lot, and it is a lot. The cash balance can only be used once to offset revenue shortfalls that exist. Now, if cash balance is used too many years in a row to balance the budget, then the amount of additional revenue and/or cuts needed to balance the budget grows, it grows exponentially. That cash balance can help soften the urgency of budget stress, but it's not a long-term solution. We used it once already last year, here. And if you look at the graph here, you can see the progression. You can see there's surplus, a small surplus here in '19, and then deficit. Now, this seems a little abrupt, but remember, this is where we were cut $2 million in state funding. So it happened all at once. Then this year, we got some of that back, along with the other one-time funding and expenditure offsets, and put us right back up into a surplus situation. So it again, it happened all at once, and it's a matter of the timing and how things transpired that is making it look this way. The trend analysis would tell us that the current fiscal year should actually be a deficit. And you can see how it comes back, everything comes back as normal when all those one-time expenses or that one-time revenue that we've used to offset expenses, and it follows that same trend. So there's some questions we need to ask. Are revenues sufficient to support the cost of current services? Are expenditures growing faster than revenue? Well, we've answered one of those questions already. There was a 10-year promise made during the bond issue to build the academic center that we're in right now. Now, it has been priority to the board to hold true on that promise. An operating levy in the spring of 2022 would fulfill that promise, and that would be the timing that I would recommend. A levy passed in '22 would not be distributed to the district as revenue until 2023, and that is where that tax year, calendar year versus fiscal year come into play. So essentially, that means that it's a delayed timing effect. So the first fiscal year following an election is only going to generate half of a typical year's proceeds from whatever levy decision is determined or made at that time. So that is why it's, this is something that it's always, the best outcomes are when it's always considered in advance, when we're talking about this in advance and thinking about it, before that it starts compounding and that need becomes very immediate. And what that does is end up, it ends up costing more than what would have been required had it been discussed in advance. So with that, I do think that we can balance the budget by that time. I'm hopeful that we can do that, and not just to be in a good position financially, but to be in a good position from a planning perspective, so that we're able to continue to deliver on expectations as the district grows and as we grow as a community as a whole. And that concludes the May forecast report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So just to be clear, our surplus was generated by one-time revenue streams that we can no longer forecast, correct?
Correct.
Savings from the pandemic will be savings that we will no longer realize once we go back to school full-time in the fall. And based on that, among other things, the deficit spending, there's no other answer at this point, short of a new revenue stream through a new levy or cutting things. Those are our options. And the reason we're sharing this information with you now is to get out in front of it so you have the information sooner versus later. North Ridgeville City Schools has done an amazing job of offering so many things to our students that would be directly put at risk. Our STEM programs, our distance learning, all the things that we share with you month to month, the highlights that we share with you month to month is because of the hard work of staff, but staff comes at a cost. The growth in this district will continue to generate opportunities, but with those opportunities, there's expenses. So again, we're sharing this information with you to get out in front of it, so that you see it coming, so we can start having candid conversations on how this district looks moving forward and what we want for the students. That growth will continue. Building has not slowed down through this pandemic in North Ridgeville by any stretch of the imagination. And once we come out on the backside of this pandemic, I anticipate some of the students that went elsewhere will be returning to North Ridgeville City Schools. So looking forward, we really need to have these conversations, and I appreciate the fact that our treasurer has taken a look at it, because when you explain the situation, if we do it later versus sooner, it costs more money. That's a fact, that's just the way the math pans out. So please, as you look at this stuff and you hear our highlights, understand that our highlights that we share with you come at a cost, and these students deserve the very best that we have to offer. And I don't want to see any of that put at risk. I understand we all have budgets, I understand we all have financial obligations, but part of living in this community is the financial responsibility that we have to well over 4,000 students, and that number will continue to grow and grow each year. So again, I appreciate the information you've shared tonight, and I appreciate you getting out in front of it well in advance of it becoming problematic. Move.
That seems like a perfect segue into our next report. You know, it is exciting to be a member of the North Ridgeville community and to experience the growth that we are, you know, we are seeing here, and you know, that has been happening since the moment I walked in the door, and we know that we have needs moving forward, and we know that the students are continuing to join us here in North Ridgeville City Schools. But in order to make sure that we can accommodate our students and families and our community, it is necessary to hire staff. And so I would like to take this opportunity to turn it over to Mr. David Fritt, who would like to introduce our first round of staff members in bulk that we are looking to bring onboard with us here for the 21-22 school year. Mr. Fritt.
Thank you, Superintendent Casario. So I want to start by thanking our retiring teachers today. I think Mrs. Casario said 200 years worth of experience leading us collectively, and that's going to be hard to replace. You know, what encourages me is the quality of people that we're bringing into the district as we sit here, and I know some of them are here with us tonight, so I want to appreciate their time for joining us tonight. So as Superintendent said, we have about 13 people joining us new tonight. I anticipate that when we meet next month, we'll have a list probably of similar statue, or not statue, stature to work through. So just some of our new folks and some highlights that they bring with us. At the district level, we have Marissa Walters joining us. Marissa was selected to be a school psychologist for the district. She currently holds that position with the Ravenna City Schools. We've got Emma Mackey joining us. Emma is selected to be a speech and language pathologist for the district. She's currently an early intervention team leader, speech-language pathologist at the Family Child Learning Center at Akron Children's Hospital. So when we look at ECLC, we've got Michelle Janowski joining us. Michelle was chosen to be an art teacher at the Early Childhood Learning Community. She's currently a middle school art teacher educating students at the Old Brooklyn Community Middle School with Constellation Schools. Liberty Elementary has Kayla Hopson joining us. Kayla is currently a student teacher here at the academic center. She'll be graduating with a Bachelor's of Science in Education with a mild moderate from Cleveland State University. She'll be an intervention specialist at Liberty Elementary, and most exciting for us, and I think Kayla is on our call, is Kayla's an NRCS graduate, so she's coming home to be with us. Our HDA, we've got three people here with us tonight from there. All of them will be at our 712 High School program. We have Natalie Alfano. Natalie is a graduate of Kent State University this past spring, and Natalie will be our, one of our math teachers with a major in integrated mathematics. John Hody is with us. John is currently an English teacher at the Design Lab High School in Cleveland, and he'll be teaching English, 712 Ranger High Tech Academy. And Gabriella Schuppert. Gabriella graduated from Kent State University this spring, Bachelor's of Science in Education with Integrated Science and an emphasis of life science. So she'll be with us at Ranger High Tech as well, helping to round out that 7 through 12 program. NRC 34, we've got a couple of familiar faces that will be with us. We've got Kayla Clem. Kayla has spent this past year as a leave replacement substitute doing one of our online courses for fourth grade. So Kayla will be joining us as a full-time staff member. And Joan Gill. Joan has been with us over the course of the school year as an intervention specialist at the academic center, a leave replacement, and she'll be joining us full-time as well. So welcome to both of you. The academic center, we've got three people slated for, for the 5'8" end of the building. We've got Rena Adah. Rena is an art teacher at John F. Kennedy Elementary in Maple Heights, and she'll be joining us to be an art teacher at 5'8" Academic Center. Alyssa Thomason. Alyssa is grad, or just graduated from the Ohio State University with a bachelor's degree in education. She'll be a seventh grade math teacher in the fall. And Sarah Kasicki. Sarah is currently an intervention specialist at North Olmsted Middle School and has been in education for about six years now. She'll be an intervention specialist at the academic center at 5'8". And then lastly, at NRHS, we've got Amanda Zupansik joining us. Amanda has six years of experience as an IS and graduated from Wittenburg University in 2010, and she'll be an intervention specialist at our high school. You know, what really excites me about this group coming in is sitting through the interviews and knowing how many we've done, you know, I really feel like we've got the best of the bunch out there. We've got a bunch of bright educators joining us, hard-working educators that I think could take us to that next level. Another thing I think is exciting is, you know, we've kind of got a range here. We've got people coming to us just out of school, and we've got people that got three or four or five years of experience who have seen some things and and we've got people that got three or four or five years of experience who have seen some things and can bring them into better the district. So all in all, I think we're in a great shape, and I'm looking forward to working with each of these people over the next months and years. So welcome, everyone. We're glad to have you as part of our team.
You're one of our new hires. If you could just give us a wave so that we know that you were with us this evening? The fonts on your name is not very kind in these old eyes, so welcome.
As Mr. Fritt said, thank you to all of our new staff members. I met most of you and definitely look forward to starting in a mostly normal year and getting to, into your classrooms and seeing all the great things you're doing. So have a great summer and we'll be excited to see you in August. And that, President Vaca, concludes the superintendent's.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to announcements. Does anybody have any announcements this evening? See you none. Here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. If you have anything you would like to address the Board of Education, now's your opportunity. Please state your name and your address. Keep in mind, we allocate three minutes per individual, up to 30 minutes, so that we can conduct regular business and get through this in a timely manner.
So with that, then we'll start off. We have a person who is, who is with us here in person, and then we will go to our remote participants if they would like to make a comment to the board. So with that, we will then turn it over to, and I'm sorry, I did that, Kevin.
Mind if I take my mask off? It's incredibly warm in that thing. My name's Brendan McCool. I live at 38733 Sugar Ridge Road. Mr. President, I actually really appreciate you saying that the board wants to be candid and upfront. Perfect. Because I understand that this is the public comment portion. It's not the public board conversation hour, so not a lot happens here. But that's why I am here. I want to know why no one on the board will email me back. I understand that I asked a very specific question, but it was very straightforward. The way I see it, nobody wants to answer my question. We want to hide from it. We want to obfuscate answers. It would imply to me that somebody has something to hide. So I'm going to ask it again here in public.
Can you tell me when you emailed the Board of Education?
I emailed everybody last, I believe it was Thursday. If not, it was Friday.
Email addresses you sent this to?
All to the emails that were listed on the Board of Education website.
I have received nothing.
Okay.
I look forward to hearing your question for the first time.
Well, I apologize. My question, though, I have is that can anybody explain to me how the Diversifying Education Profession Grant is not the proverbial camel's nose under the tent for critical race theory, its analogs, or anything of that nature?
Normally, we don't engage, but let's be very specific, especially after the assumption thrown at us that we didn't respond to your email. In no shape or form is a critical race theory. And my question is, is other than the board, have you reached out to anybody at administration to get details as to the university training because it was readily available?
Oh, yes. Actually, I reached out to Ms. Vance. I spoke to her in a series of emails. The last one was April, I believe, 22nd. I was told I would have an answer within a week. I had to go through one other person and never heard anything. I assume dealing with other cities and stuff in the past, it was probably a lawyer or somebody who said, "Don't give anything out to the public." But that's just an assumption. I don't know. Still waiting on that email. It's been three weeks. Looked at what the city submitted to the state. I actually have a public records request in right now for all the documentation that was submitted yesterday. So I realize there's a 72-hour window for the district to get back to me, so I'm waiting expectantly for that. But actually, the grant itself didn't bother me. What the issue was is when I started seeing what the other school systems were putting in for and all the hidden key phrases and stuff, diversity, inclusion, all that, all those, all the keywords for it. It's all the critical race theory stuff. As I heard you say before the meeting today, the 1619 project, that's obviously, you know, that's been pretty much debunked across the board that it's just made up. So anyway, I don't want to get into policy debate. I don't want to get into any of that here. I just want to know how come I'm getting, as well. I just would like to a little bit of back and forth here, sending emails, you know.
Received your email, sir.
No, right now, sir, and I have not received. Can you tell me the email address that came from her?
I cannot. If you can just. Send, send the same email. It's brendan.mccool@gmail.com.
Again, getting back to a lot of assumptions that have been made, sir. Regardless of what's being done in other schools, I worry about North Ridgeville City Schools and the curriculum and the opportunities being afforded to our students. And coming here loaded for bear based on assumptions, first and foremost, benefits absolutely nobody. And in order to have a rash conversation, it starts at a baseline of mutual respect and not assumptions. I understand there's a hypersensitivity to what's going on politically in a politically charged environment in this country right now. But again, starting at that baseline without having the information, and I do apologize if you haven't got that in a timely manner, and that will be rectified immediately. But coming here again, loaded there, looking for something that you don't even know exists based on what you found out about other school districts or what you've heard through the grapevine, through parents in other school districts, is irrelevant to what we're doing here. We will continue to provide curriculum that's solid, reasonable, and fact-based, like we always have. We will continue to vet all curriculum that we roll out to our students. And that's the baseline. That's where you start. You start by reaching out to the people that have those answers. And again, if you haven't got that in a timely manner, which I'm not aware of one way or the other, based on the fact that none of us have received your email, and this stuff happens, so I can appreciate the fact that three of the board members immediately were able to pull up their emails and verify that they indeed have not received it. I'm asking for a fair opportunity to get you the information as to what we are teaching our kids. I know that a superintendent reached out to you, introduced herself, and there's, my understanding that your kids will be coming to North Ridgeville City Schools.
Possibly. One, one up to three possibly.
But diversity training in itself is not a bad thing if you know what the diversity training is, and we will get you that information. And again, this is based on a hypersensitivity to the politically charged environment in this country where very few people are making any effort to get the facts and the information prior to engaging people. And that's part of the problem. But sir, you started off with accusations and assumptions, and I'm saying.
Oh, no, there was no accusation or assumption. I just wanted to know why I won't get it, and I will tell you. My email.
You did say that you haven't received, you accused us of not responding to you, sir, when we did not receive anything to respond to.
I have sent this email at, I'm sorry, your name, you're Ms. McCarthy. I sent it to you on May 13th at 5:29 PM.
Be happy to look again, but I have not seen.
And I did not get an error kicking it back saying it was not received, so that would suggest that there's possibly a problem.
Either with Gmail or the school.
Right. I just.
We will get you that information. And again, if there was a lag in getting that information to you, I apologize. But that's where we start. And you can follow up with those people, and you can get actual information as to what we are doing here in North Ridgeville City Schools. Again, completely irrelevant to what any other district or school district is doing in this country. I don't have any ability to affect change in those districts. I have no authority in those districts. We can only speak to what is here. So we appreciate it. Normally, our engagement would be, we will get to the person that has the utmost accurate information, and that's where I'm going to leave it at this point, is we have your concerns, we will make sure somebody follows up with you again in a very timely manner and get you the answers to your questions.
Okay, that's all I ask, as I said.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, then, we will go to our remote participants to see if there's any comments that they would like to make to the Board of Education. We are giving the ability to unmute your microphone at this time. Mr. McMillan has his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. McMillan.
I just wanted to welcome all the new teachers to North Ridgeville. Welcome to the family. I am the association president, so I'll be looking forward to talking, meeting with you, and congratulations on landing a job as early as you did in the summer so that you guys can relax. So glad to see you all and look forward to meeting you in person.
All right. Well, with that, it looks like we do not have any more people who would like to address the board. So we're going to turn off the ability to unmute your microphones, and I turn it over back over to you, President Vaca.
Thank you. So we'll move right into the consensus agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consensus agenda resolution as presented. That'll be on page 14. Moved by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any discussion this evening?
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Yetsey. This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. All right, we'll move on to the finance audit report. Ms. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Vaca. Board, we have two items for consideration this evening under the finance audit report. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the financial reports for April 2021. It is additionally recommended that the five-year forecast as presented by Mr. Pasini be approved this evening. I move to approve the finance audit report in one reading.
Moved by Ms. McCarthy, second by Ms. Tamira. Is there any discussion?
Just want to thank Mr. Pasini for the in-depth presentation of the five-year forecast and your diligence in making it as complete and whole as possible.
Roll call, please.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is Yetsey. This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. Hey, we'll move on to the education report. Ms. Tamira?
Thank you. We have one item under the education report. I recommend that we approve an agreement with Spacebound Solutions for the purchase of 1,350 Lenovo Chromebooks. This purchase will allow us to replenish our supply of student Chromebooks and ensure that devices are here in time for the first day of the 2021-2022 school year. I move to approve the education report in one reading.
Second?
Moved by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Can we discuss why we're approving this now and how this is a planned-for purchase that will come out of the next fiscal year? Is that correct?
Yeah, so we're approving it now so that we are able to provide an intent to purchase a letter of intent so that we, there are no delays. Right now, there's an eight-to-10, eight-to-10-week delay delivery for these Chromebooks. This is part of our technology rotation plan that has been incorporated into the forecast. So this is something that we had planned on, but we're having the board approve it now. The purchase, the expenditure, will not actually take place until we get into July and enter into the new fiscal year. But we wanted to have the board approve it so that we can provide that letter of intent so that we are able, they, the vendor is going to hold these Chromebooks for us. So that, like I said.
So that we're not delayed in the fall, getting the materials that we need first.
We have, we need when we need it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Roll call, please.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is Yetsey. This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. Moving to the human resources report. Ms. Saxon?
Yes, we have several items in the human resources report. Two certified staff resignations, two support staff resignations, one certified staff contract, one supplemental contract, one support staff contract, two special project supplemental contracts, one support staff leave of absence. I move to approve the human resources items in one reading.
Moved by Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. McCarthy. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is Saxon.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Yetsey. This is Tamira.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.
Yes. Before we enter into the executive session, I apologize. Typically, I don't get hat under the collar too often, but in defense of Ms. Vance, seeing as how her name was mentioned specifically, this woman is beyond committed to this district and the well-being of these students. And anything and everything she does is in their best interest, as well as every other administrator, teacher, custodian, bus driver that works in North Ridgeville City Schools. And I understand the political environment that this country is currently in, but it has no place without having facts and information. And where myself, I tend to lean one way or the other on these things. If you're going to base it on fact, base it on fact, and the fact that tonight we had information that was shared that wasn't of that nature, we encourage public participation. We encourage transparency, and we encourage you to reach out to our school district. But please do it in a manner that's conducive to a conversation that's valid in the best interest of our students and based on fact. We will stand by our decisions. We will readily share how we came to our decisions, and we will do that and continue to do that. So I couldn't leave this meeting in good conscience, knowing full that, while that one of our staff members was mentioned by name and let it lay. Her character integrity did not deserve to be questioned this evening, and I have no doubt that the information that this gentleman was looking for will be readily available. And to anybody else that has any concerns about what your children are learning in North Ridgeville City Schools, reach out. We're open to these conversations. We're not afraid of them, and we will engage you and we will give you the facts. Again, I apologize if I came off anything less than professional this evening, but I don't and I will not condone attacks on our staff and the integrity in North Ridgeville City Schools. So I'm done with my grandstanding. Everybody enjoy your evening and have a good night.
Executive session, Mr. Vaca.
It is recommended that the Board of Education, that's our executive session, to discuss the employment of public employees. There will be no action follow. 6:47.
Roll call, please.
This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
This is Yetsey. This is Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Vaca.